Okay, so here we go. Calling the meeting back to order. We haven't had a meeting before. So with that in mind, City Clerk, could you please give us your call?
Councilmember Shanta has members for law.
Present.
And there's Mr. Curry and Mr. Price are our office.
Okay. Please stand for the flag, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a term on the agenda?
Can I, real quick?
Oh, that's right.
We may want to move the -- or remove the section with the contract with SMC because we don't have a form to be able to act on that in regards to that yourself would have to retrieve yourself.
I need to say that. Let me start off by saying that. So this is a matter of a contract between Cisco Media Council and the government who checked with -- I am now the executive director of the Cisco Media Council. I'm doing that right now without pay pro bono. But the point of the relationship and the potential for conflict of interest, number one, I'll be refusing myself from any negotiations regarding this, and I would be refusing myself from any discussions on this item. And so with that in mind, our attorney, John Kenny, recommended that the way to solve the problem would be for the -- you can say the rest, but I'll go.
No, no, no. Yeah, I'm just asking to take it off the agenda.
That's why we're moving it.
Yeah.
Okay, but how will that work? So I'm not -- we just won't go into it right now?
Yeah, just remove it off the agenda.
So I make a motion to adjourn the agenda as amended and strike C of the business.
That's first. I'll second. First and second moved consecutively. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. With that in mind, the next thing we have lined up is a presentation. Are we all set for that right now?
I will make a phone call just to let the public know.
You want me to do that while you're present?
Yes.
Okay. So last year, the city of Dunsmere worked together with the city of Weed and the city of Mount Shasta to spend together $100,000, 33 apiece. And the idea was to reach out to the top broadband expert in the country and to have them come in and evaluate together as three cities so we could afford their services to see how we might progress to be able to add fiber to the homes, have a gigabit city network that we could be working and enticing businesses in. And what we're having right now is the report at the end from the company, from CTC. And so that's the conference call that's being set up right now. And whenever you're ready, we'll be receiving the report.
Do you know when we need to change slides? Or can you see my screen?
No, let me know when to change slides.
So we're on slide three at the moment. And I was saying that following the meetings that Mike and I had with the various stakeholders and the site survey that I conducted, we then developed --
In terms of evaluating the local broadband market as it existed at that time, we created the conceptual design and cost estimate for a fiber network that would pass every home in the city. This universal or ubiquitous deployment was an articulated goal of leadership when we began the project.
Go ahead. Just sort of go.
We developed potential business models for necessary fees, costs, funding and financing for the network to cash flow. And we developed a draft request for information for potential partnership with the private sector. So these efforts underpin our analysis and the resulting report and its attachments, as well as the follow-up Q and A that we provided in May just a few weeks ago. Also, throughout the course of this project, we made efforts to maintain a dialogue with representatives from the cities, answering questions as they arose, including preparation of a detailed Q and A document last fall, following a series of meetings and written questions that were posed by the cities. So that Q and A document is actually attached to the report as Appendix B. And so there are actually two separate Q and A documents. And that's a summary of the methodology that we used in preparing the final report and written deliverables to the cities. So if you want to go to slide four.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. So what we learned at the time about the existing broadband market is that the options are somewhat limited compared to available broadband service nationwide, although both Calor and Northland were working at that time to improve both their existing infrastructure and their service offerings. One thing that's really important to note here in the analysis that we conduct of local broadband markets is that not all service offerings are available in all areas. So there will be outliers, right? So there will be places where maybe the service is not as good as in other places. But on the whole, what we noted was that available speed in Dunsmere and Weed were lower than what could be purchased in Mount Shasta at the time. And many of the stakeholders that we met with complained of inconsistent service, inadequate speeds, issues with dependability. And this was from both a residential and a business standpoint, as well as the perspective of representatives from the cities, which was largely based on input from the community. So at the time we prepared this report, the maximum speed available in the area was 24 megabits per second download speeds, although we were advised by Northland that those speeds would be significantly increased by the end of 2017. Today, both Northland and Calor are offering speeds up to 100 megabits per second upload -- I'm sorry, download and 10 megabits per second upload speed. So this is really important. The FCC's definition of the service level that constitutes broadband, so service that can be categorized as broadband, is 25 megabits per second download speeds and 3 megabits per second upload speeds. So at the time that we started this study, the service that was available in the cities didn't even technically qualify as broadband service. But today, the available service is four times what the download speed is that the FCC considers broadband. And I mentioned speeds nationwide. Comparable to other areas in the U.S., the cities are in pretty good shape, especially when talking about cities the size of Dunsmere, Mount Shasta and Weed. 100 megabits per second download speeds is pretty fast. So if you want to go to slide five?
Go ahead.
So our report outlines four overarching potential approaches to increasing competitive broadband services in the cities. The first approach involves encouraging the local provider community to upgrade existing infrastructure and potentially develop new infrastructure to supplement their existing networks. So as I noted, both Calor and Northland have already begun that process. And the other three options are what I'll call construction models. And what that means is that they'll require some sort of infrastructure investment from the cities. And the most important thing to note about those three construction models, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about in just a moment, is that all of those would require at least $10 million in funding from the outset. And so what this means is they would require $10 million of grant money or cash on hand or some other source of funding that would not have to be paid back or otherwise recovered by the cities. And for each of those three construction models, that $10 million would need to be expended to even get the projects off the ground. And when I'm talking about those models, there's -- when I mentioned relying on the private sector to upgrade existing networks, that's one end of the spectrum. On the opposite end of the spectrum is the cities constructing a publicly owned network where the cities, or possibly one lead city acting on behalf of maybe a consortium of all the cities, would act as the retail service provider or the RSP. And we use that term retail service provider to encompass not only internet service providers, but also providers of other retail services that might be delivered over a fiber network. So things like voice, video, data, security monitoring, and so on. The next option would be to pursue a competitive access model in which the cities would construct a fiber network and lease that infrastructure to an outside entity that would act as the RSP. And the final approach is something called a community access model, in which the cities would construct fiber to enable multiple RSPs to sell services. And this, a slight variation of this, is the AMN Idaho model, which was raised as a potential model that the cities may be interested in pursuing, based on the input that we received from leadership in the cities. And so I'll talk a little more in detail about each of those models, given that they all carry different potential degrees of risk and reward. Do you want to go to slide six?
Go ahead.
So that first model, or first approach, I guess it's not really a model, but that first approach to broadband that I mentioned involves relying on the private sector to address service availability issues in the community. And of course, this carries the least amount of financial risk for the cities, especially given that some of the providers are already taking steps to enhance available services through network upgrades and enhancements. This might be an attractive option. And like I said, that's one end of the spectrum, where the cities would not need to make a significant investment or take a significant financial risk. And all the way on the other end of that spectrum is the possibility of the cities working together to construct a publicly owned network to become a retail service provider directly serving the end user, both residential and business. This carries the greatest degree of risk for the cities because it involves the cities entering the broadband market as a provider and competing with the private sector. And so there are some places where this has been reasonably successful in the U.S., but those are very specific examples with very specific parameters that have enabled that success. So for example, if a public entity enters the market where there's not really a competitor, so maybe where community members can't gain access to services that the city provider might be able to offer, obviously this gives the public entity a competitive edge. Additionally, there have been situations throughout the U.S. where there might be significant available grant funds that don't require that public entity to recoup their capital investment, and that can lead to, you know, a successful deployment. But generally speaking, it is very difficult for a public entity to compete with the private sector in the broadband market. Often, the private sector has things like economies of scale that just can't be matched by the public entity, and the private sector can spread their costs out over multiple markets. And obviously, that's not the case for a public entity that's serving only its own community. So for the cities, especially in light of the cost to deploy a network and the necessary take rates to make the enterprise cash flow, the cities would not be able to offer competitive prices to consumers if they were to act as the retail service provider. In fact, as we were analyzing estimates, as we were analyzing cost estimates and conducting our financial analysis, we were unable to produce a cost model in which the cities could achieve positive cash flow while acting directly as the retail service provider. So you can go to the next slide.
Okay.
And so the next approach is the competitive access model. And there are actually two variations of what we call a competitive access model, where the cities would develop a fiber network and lease that infrastructure to an outside entity that would then act as the retail service provider. One of those approaches is based on the partnership between the city of Westminster, Maryland, and its partner, Team Internet. And the other is based on the Huntsville Utilities Partnership with Google Fiber. So in each of these, the public entity made a significant investment in infrastructure that was leased in some capacity to the private provider. And in both of those models, the public partner constructs, owns, and maintains a fiber network that passes every home and business, while a private partner then places electronics to light that network. And in each of these variations of the competitive access model, the private partner directly serves the end user. And both models would require an FTP deployment in which the cities would deploy that network. And so the cities would be responsible for the costs associated with deploying, owning, maintaining that infrastructure. Where the Westminster model and the Huntsville Utilities model differ is in their treatment of the fiber drop cable, which is the cable that connects a resident or business to the larger distribution network. So in Westminster, the city opted to go ahead and maintain ownership of that drop cable. They wanted to maintain ownership of the entire network. Whereas in Huntsville, Google Fiber actually pays for and installs the drop to the customer. So those are the different competitive access models. It's important to note that in the city of Westminster, the private partner paid to the city $6 per passing and then $17 per subscriber that subscribed to services on the network. And in Huntsville Utilities, the Huntsville Utilities model, Google Fiber pays $7.50 per passing. Of course, there's no subscriber fee because Google Fiber owns the drop cable. That's important to note because when we were conducting our analysis for what the cities might be looking at based on those models, the fees that would be necessary to collect from a private partner were three to five times what is currently being collected in Westminster and Huntsville. So it was about a little over three times what the city is collecting in Westminster and around five times what Huntsville Utilities is collecting. So the fourth model, or the fourth approach, is something that we call the community access model. And in this model, the cities would deploy all of the outside plant and all of the network assets and allow multiple retail service providers to offer services over that network. An example of this, or variation of this, is the AMN Idaho model. And this is a model that was brought to us, we were aware of it, but that was raised as an example that the cities might want to consider. So a couple of things that are important to note about the AMN model specifically is that that model doesn't actually provide ubiquitous coverage, which is, you know, a stated goal of the cities. So in AMN, it actually relies on what's called a demand aggregation approach. So infrastructure is deployed once a certain take rate has been achieved. And this is similar to the Google Fiber approach in Kansas City. In AMN, the reported necessary take rate to start that build is 67% to 70% in that range. And that's very high. Those are very high take rates. That's comparison. Our analyses are generally based on about 35% take rate. It's also important to note that in AMN, every subscriber pays a $3,000 infrastructure fee, either upfront or financed over 20 years. Additionally, each subscriber pays the city of AMN a monthly infrastructure fee, is financed, and a monthly operations and maintenance fee. So it is a somewhat attractive model, but it's also a bit more complex than I think some people realize. So if you want to go to the next slide?
Good.
So as I mentioned, all of the construction models, which is essentially every model, so the retail services model where the cities would become the retail service provider, the community access model, and the competitive access model, $10 million startup funding would be required for all of those models. In each of these models, the outside plant construction costs would total around $15 million, which is about $3,000 per resident or business. That also is very high. Typically, a more feasible deployment would be in about the $1,000 to $2,000 per resident or business range. It's also important to note that the partnership models are -- nothing will change the economics of the cost to deploy the network. So even if there is a partnership approach, the money has to come from somewhere, right, to build that network? You can go to the next slide.
Okay. We have a question. Well, is this $10 million per city or for the region? Okay. So the $10 million, is that per city or for aggregate of all three cities?
So that's an aggregate number for all three cities. And as I'll say this now, and it's also part of my presentation, we think that if the cities were to pursue anything, it would be really, really prudent to do so together. And we wouldn't advise trying, you know, one city trying to do something on its own. But that's an aggregate number.
And we're now on slide nine?
Slide nine. And so we just wanted to mention that these are all fiber approaches that we looked at on behalf of the cities. And the reason for this is that fiber is, you know, the preferred option for new construction. There are -- fiber carries certain benefits that are just unmatched by other technologies, and it also supports other technologies. So in cases where an existing network is not being upgraded, so a new construction network, fiber is the preferred option. It's currently the most future-proof, scalable, long-term broadband infrastructure option, and we don't anticipate that changing anytime soon. At the same time, we expect that demand is only going to increase at both the residential and business level as applications and electronics become increasingly sophisticated. It's also really important to note that 5G and other wireless technologies aren't possible without fiber. Those technologies rely on fiber. So you can actually go to the next slide. There are alternatives. So that said, about fiber, there are alternative solutions to fiber premises, I should say, to a fiber premises deployment by the cities. Of course, the first is to encourage incumbents to deploy additional infrastructure. And like I've said, we've seen that both Calor and Northland have been improving their offerings just since, you know, this study started, whenever we were in the area in February of 2017 to now, the speeds have increased significantly. Another potential alternative is to deploy a fiber backbone between the three cities, and that would cost around $3.252 million. This would create an asset that would connect cities, and it would also connect certain key sites, so school sites, city sites, and other potential sites that the cities identified as being important to connect. So the cities could encourage existing local providers or new market entrants to use that network, and it would be a public demonstration of the city's commitment to addressing some of the broadband challenges in the community. Finally, another alternative is a fixed wireless deployment. It's important to note that a fixed wireless deployment is going to have inherent limitations when it comes to coverage and capacity. And when your goal is a universal service deployment, or ubiquitous service deployment, as we call it, to every home and business, that coverage and capacity limitation is made even more complex. So wireless would also come with a greater cost of ownership to the cities in the long term, even though it would have a shorter, I'm sorry, a lower initial cost in the beginning. So if you want to go to the next slide?
Okay.
So our primary recommendation to the cities is to kind of regroup and think about what exactly your goals and objectives are as a locality and determine your desired path forward. It's, given the incumbent movement over the last 18 months, it seems it would be prudent for the cities to really work to engage that local provider community in further discussion about what the cities might be able to do to encourage and enable additional infrastructure deployment and development. And so it may be such that, for example, the cities identify key areas where the incumbent providers haven't addressed some of the gaps in service availability, and the cities come up with ways to address those areas, right? So maybe the cities are able to help the -- so as an example, maybe the cities are able to encourage wireless internet service providers or WISPs to serve certain areas that haven't necessarily been addressed by the incumbent response so far. If the cities were to determine that they wanted to pursue some sort of partnership, it'll be important to determine what the parameters of that might look like. So again, this is sort of along the line of deciding, how do you want to move forward? What are your goals at this point? So now that you've learned, you know, that it's going to be really expensive to deploy infrastructure, it's going to be especially expensive to deploy infrastructure that's going to reach every resident or business in all three cities, what might be an approach that is more realistic or more feasible? And it's up to you all to determine what feasible means for your cities, right? One thing that we do think might be prudent is to establish some sort of working agreement among the three cities, so whether that's an intergovernmental agreement or some sort of consortium or otherwise, you know, just jointly working together in a legally sanctioned way. So you, as representatives of your city, will actually determine with representatives from the other two cities and follow by legal counsel what that's going to look like and what laws and regulations you might be beholden to. But the key here is that if you move forward, like I said, no matter what, no matter how you move forward, even if it's not necessarily an investment approach, it's going to be really important to move forward together as a joint effort, as opposed to one city trying to undertake something like this on its own. So it'll be really important for you, if you decide to move forward with something, to develop some sort of joint governance structure and determine who has what responsibilities. So that sums up the report and the analysis that we did at a high level. You know, the report is very dense. There's a lot of information in there. There's a lot of analysis in there. And we wanted this presentation, I mean, you know, we addressed things at a high level, and I don't even know how long I'm talking.
Oops. Hello?
Hello?
The call dropped on us.
What's that?
The call dropped?
Oh, hold on, just a second. Okay, the call dropped, but we have you back now.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Okay. Where did I lose you?
Right at the very end. I'm on slide 12 now.
Slide 12. Okay. So yeah, what I was saying is that, you know, this is a high-level look at the report and the analysis that we conducted. It's a very dense report. It's a long report. There's a lot of analysis in there. There are a lot of numbers in there. And it's up to you as a city, along with the other two cities, to what degree you want to make that report publicly available, that report and the additional Q and A. But we're available right now for questions. We're happy to answer questions that you might have. We just didn't want to get too far into the weeds because, like I said, I've been talking for quite a while, and we've, you know, we've addressed sort of at a high level what's in that report.
Okay. Thank you, Sabrina. Does anyone have any questions they want to ask us? No, let me just say thank you, and we'll make sure that if anybody has questions, we'll take questions from the audience. Go ahead.
Just a quick, couple of quick ones. Can you hear me?
No. I actually can't hear, Mark, so if that is a question or comment, would you mind repeating that to me?
I just have a couple of quick questions. I was wondering, what was the smallest-size city that you roughly would estimate as a possibility for putting a backbone infrastructure in, population-wise, number?
The...so I don't know that I understand. You're saying what is the smallest?
When I was reading your resume, you quoted several cities, it wasn't one city less than 100,000 people that you participated in or recommended a model for. I was wondering, what would be the smallest city that would meet a reasonable expectation for the backbone?
This is a problem, I think, it's not really... It's just a variety of factors that go into, you know, where it seems to make sense, where to work.
Well, what if I told you 600 customers? If I could get 600 customers, is there any model that might be possible?
So it depends on a variety of factors. One of the key things has to do with...
600, though, that's a word for bad number.
I'm sorry, say that again?
He's wanting to know if he had 600 customers.
Is there any model that might possibly work?
I mean, potentially? It's actually kind of funny, but the smaller the deployment, the harder it often is to make it work, depending on the density. So that's one of the challenges that we have in this, in essentially, one of the issues that we saw with Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, and Reed is that the high cost to, the high cost for passing, right? So it's about $3,000 for passing. So that is based on the fact that there's not a lot of density, so there's not a lot of customers per square mile. So 600 people is kind of an arbitrary number. The question would then become, you know, what would those 600 people have to pay for service? So as an example, when we looked at the community access model, each passing would have to pay $75 per month, in addition to the service fees for whatever service they opted to buy. So every household and business would be assessed that $75 fee, plus whatever they opted to, you know, to purchase in terms of services. I think it's really hard to answer that question, unfortunately. You know, it's 600 people, a threshold that would allow this kind of deployment, because there are a lot of variants, right? Are those 600 people all in the same location? Are they all residential customers? Are they all commercial customers? But off the cuff, I would say that, no, 600 people, 600 customers signing up, that's a really small customer base. So as an example, I'll tell you that I, before coming to CTC, worked, I was the Director of Operations for Urbana-Champaign Big Broadband Network, and we were a network, a BTOC-funded network in Champaign-Urbana, Illinois, which is where I'm actually located. And we had about 1,200 customers, and they were a mix of residential and commercial customers. And the service was priced slightly below, like, competitive market rates. But we were also a consortium of two cities and a university who essentially supported financially the operation side of the network, right? So paid for whatever deficit there was on the operation side. And we ran at a significant deficit every month, and we were not even paying back our capital costs, because we had $30 million in grants to develop that infrastructure. So just for the operations costs of serving about 1,200 customers, we were several thousand dollars in debt every month that had to be supported by the consortium members. So the cities are Champaign, Urbana, and the university.
All right, thanks, Sabrina. I think the question was answered. Is there any other questions from the public? Public citizen?
Yes, my question is too bold. What is, in the study that you performed for the three cities, as I understand that the metrics say that Siskiyou County is both poor and rural? So I moved from San Francisco, where competitive providers of broadband service compete on both quality and price. Up here, there's not the demand, and the consequence is that incumbent carriers have no interest really in providing broadband service. So the question is, did you do any sort of a study on ubiquity of broadband availability to the three communities? How many households or businesses have access to federal and state-defined broadband access? And the cost of it? I think, my belief is there are a lot of people who have no access whatsoever, because they can't afford it, and for those that can afford some level of access, it's generally subpar. That leads to California caring a lot about the digital divide issue, and that seniors shouldn't be left behind, our students shouldn't be left behind, and I believe both at the federal and state level, there's a number of sources of funding to make sure no community or no region of California is left on the wrong side of the digital divide. Did you look at the California High Cost Fund, or any sources of funding that could help the smaller communities? That, I agree with your recommendation, should work together to make sure our citizens have the same broadband access as the rest of California. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Tom, I'll take a cut at that answer.
He cuts out.
Yeah, Tom, your connection is really poor, we can't understand what you're saying. Ask Sabrina if she would address it.
Is this better at all?
It's still in... Sabrina? Sabrina, is anyone else on the call, hearing him?
Is this better?
No, not really, it's not much better.
So why don't I go ahead, and can you hear me, Sabrina?
I can hear you, Michael.
Okay, great. So I think what Tom was starting to say is that the federal and state funding sources that are available, they are highly, highly competitive to obtain, and the way that many of those programs are structured, they are focused on communities where there is absolutely nothing available. So a lot of times, the way that the programs, where you apply for funding, you have to prove that you have nothing available in an entire census tract, or an entire census block. You have to prove that you don't have speeds greater than 10 megabits per second down, and 1 megabit per second up. So even though there's a lot of press that there's a lot of funding available, and that there are a lot of grants that cities can apply for, et cetera, as of right now, the way that that funding is structured, it's not really, the cities of Mount Shasta, Dunsmere, and Reed are not really eligible for that, for those programs. It's really designed more for extraordinarily rural communities, where there's literally nothing else available.
Any other questions?
I would add to that, that... Sorry, go ahead. Another question?
No, no, we were just asking if there are any other questions of the public. There are not, so thank you. Would you thank her? Yes, we're in a council meeting, so we are running out of time, so we've got to move on, and we'd like to thank you for your time and the presentations.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item. I know that took a while, but I know it was something that we needed to hear, and all that information will be available on the website, so you can download and look at it. It doesn't mean that this is dead in the water, but we are facing the real fact that right now with our financial situation, it does not appear that we have an immediate path forward. So as I said, we'll continue to look at this, but that's the result of the study we had. With that in mind, we have another presentation, and the presentation is from Richard Klug, Chastica Cascade Timberlands, the Fuel Brake Project. Sorry for keeping you so late.
That's all right, thanks for having me.
Okay? I have two slides?
It should be five or six. It should be PowerPoint? It's PowerPoint presentation, not a PDF.
Oh, you need it, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, yeah. While he's doing that, just like playing sound in council for having me here, a little bit of history, very recent history. My name is Richard Klug, Resource Planning Manager with Landvest Inc. We were hired by the new owners of the previous Roseburg Resource Company, Timberlands, to manage their property. That landowner is called Chastica Cascade Timberlands. Right now, it's just 170,000 acres of the old Roseburg lands. Landvest is actually a fairly large, established company, manage over 2 million acres nationwide, primarily Timberlands, mostly on the East Coast. This was their first venture on the West Coast. Likewise, Chastica Cascade Timberlands is new. Their parent company is New Forest, they own a sizable amount of forest land, primarily Australia, New Zealand, and the Far East. This was their first big venture in North America as well. So with that...
Which file was it in?
It should just be the file itself, I can't see on that screen. So the new owners realized that there were other opportunities in this region other than just cutting trees. So one of the first things they did was look at available funding, primarily this is greenhouse gas reduction funds, and this program from CAL FIRE, California Department of Forest Fire Protection, both the Forest Legacy Grant Program and the Forest Health Grant Program. This overall project involves both of those. Next slide. So the Forest Health component, actually, I have this wrong, this is the, yeah, that's right, this is Forest Health, sorry. We're proposing to use existing features where possible to build a defensible and strategically redundant series of fuel breaks on the hills east and west of Dunsmere, north and south of Dunsmere, to protect the towns of Dunsmere and Mount Shasta from fires that may originate on Chastica Cascade Timberland property and come down, and vice versa, to protect Chastica Cascade Timberlands property and the critical infrastructure on the top of the ridges and down in the canyon from human-caused ignitions down in the lower elevations. Primarily, we're proposing 300-foot fuel breaks along existing ridge-top roads. That would be 150 feet on each side of the road. On the mid-slope roads, we're proposing, again, 300-foot shaded fuel breaks 200 feet below the road, 100 feet above the road, around existing cell towers and radio infrastructure, Mount Bradley and Soda Ridge. We're currently proposing 500 fuel breaks on each side, on all four sides. We're starting to think that's a little excessive, we probably don't need to go that large to allow CAL FIRE and the Forest Service to be able to defend those structures, so we're probably going to pare that down a little bit. But either way, you can be rest assured, we're going to, if this goes through, we'll do everything we can to make sure that the sheriff's radio repeater, FBI, CHP are all up there, as well as some of the local broadcast stations. That infrastructure will be protected the best we can, and give, I said, the fire agencies a place to defend those structures. Additionally, we're looking at some prescribed burns in areas of high fuel. We've had CAL FIRE out on the site. They're anxiously, I think, anxiously intimidated over the prospect of this. They like the idea, the scale of it, they weren't so sure of, so we're still batting that around. We, you know, we'll have to wait and see how they approach that. And I guess one question for you folks would be, if we did prescribe fires up towards Mount Bradley and those big, overgrown, 100-year-old brush fields, would that be an acceptable visual result after we burn that? So not saying we would. Any prescribed fire, we'd come back, talk to folks, it would only be done through coordination with CAL FIRE and Forest Service and their fire crews. This is what the fuel breaks would look like, so the red lines, oh, next slide then. Yeah, the red lines are existing roads, so, you know, you can imagine the furthest outside from Dunsmere are the ridge-top roads, that'd be 150 feet on each side of the road. The lower images or red lines are mid-slopes, you'd have 200 feet below the road, 100 feet above the road. The purple lines are where there are no existing road features, and so that would primarily be hand-lined construction, again, 300 feet wide. Where it's brushed, it's going to be primarily bare ground. Where there's forest, it would be continuous cover, but we significantly reduce the fuel loading in those areas. The kind of brown areas, the squares are the current radio sites that we're proposing to build fuel breaks around. Next slide. Forest Legacy component of this would be conservation easement. The biggest part of it, parts of it, would be a moratorium on commercial and residential development, so there would be no houses going out into the Timberland. We'd also propose within the view shed of Dunsmere and Mount Shasta, Lake Siskiyou, Castle Crags, the ski park, continuous cover forestry, so basically no clear cuts. We've started discussions with Castle Crags State Park for transfer of some lands where the Pacific Crest Trail runs through, currently our lands. If they would like to have that property, they've expressed an interest, so we'll continue those discussions. The easement would be important connectivity between existing conservation easements over in the Pot Basin, north towards Mount Shasta, and wilderness areas, state parks to the west and south. So it'd be an important biological connectivity area. We're looking at increased riparian retention, so increased stream buffers. With that, we know that the science of riparian forestry is changing, and that there is an awareness that not cutting within riparian areas can lead to increased fuel loading, and sometimes those areas are actually the ones that burn the hottest when we do have fires. So we're proposing an adaptive management, so that if the science does change, and it becomes aware that we either need more sunlight in the streams to stimulate biological production or reduce fuels, we'd still be able to do that. Large part of this would be increased carbon sequestration through the modification of siliculture, and then we'd have increased retention or improvement of the core wildlife habitat. So this is the overall conservation easement land, next slide. Yeah. Anything, it's dark green, so the area up towards Mount Shasta, and then all the, basically the visible areas from I-5 and the towns would have that continuous cover forestry, no clear cutting. The light green areas outside would still have all silicultural options available to them, and then the section with the red-orange line that goes completely across the screen east to west, that, you know, where his cursor just went through that, if you can stop it right in the middle, that section, a little further to your east, that piece right there is the main one being proposed to donate to Castle Crags State Park, and then there's one right below the crags as well. So that's it in a nutshell. Certainly happy to answer any questions if you have.
We started off with one of the two experts we have here, firefighter now, official firefighter, Josh Brock.
I think this is a big project here.
It is a big project. There's, as we have it right now, about 46 miles of shaded fuel break. Actually shaded, and if it's brush field, it wouldn't be shaded, it'd just be fuel break.
And if you're cutting that 300 feet wide, I don't want to be part of that project. That's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, yes, yes. And then there would, it would not just be an installation, there's maintenance, a minimum, we're still going back and forth on what that will be, but we pledge to maintain it for a minimum of 20 years.
What's the timeframe for completing it?
Funding most likely wouldn't be available till 2020, and they're telling us that the funding would have to be spent by 2022.
I guess another question, too, is how much of that property would be owned, if it's recreational?
We're discussing that right now, the new owners... The new owners, on their other ownerships, don't allow a lot of recreation. Um, scoring of this grant proposal would increase with, uh, public access. So, we're working with them to decide where their comfort level is on that. Uh, most likely, there, there will be, I, I'm going out on a limb a little bit, but they have been receptive to some sort of a limited permitted recreation. So, it may be having to get a pass, something like that. But, but we are in those discussions. But I can't answer for certain right now what that would be.
Um, I believe Roseburg allowed, like, foot traffic to go through. No motorized. I mean, and then, would you, would you guys, you know, it's probably not in concrete yet. So, they discuss, but would, would traffic be allowed?
We're, we're, we really don't know yet. I mean, concede, they've been receptive to that. They are, the way this works is, is the New Forest and Chastecastle and Timberland landowners, they are getting investment money from outside groups. And so, those investors are extremely risk averse. Um, you know, they put up several hundred millions of dollars for this land with the idea that that investment will grow with the growth of the forest. And so, any sort of accident or fire on those lands would have a significant impact on the return on that investment. So, like I said, they're not, they have not shut the, the gate completely, so to speak. Uh, we're, we're having those discussions with the owners. And we, we just don't know where that would be. I, ideally, there, there would be some sort of, um, access, you know, during high ti- times of high fire danger, that would be shut down. If we're actively logging in the area, access would be restricted at a absolute minimum. Um, or vice, we're still having those discussions.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
If you'd favor, Shanti is our service expert, so she has questions?
Yes.
No, it's pretty wrong, but I have some questions for you. One of the concerns or who gets commentary going is if people look up at the hills and they see clear cutting, they don't understand fuel breaks, I don't think. But, how much of this, I mean, I'm not really familiar with, you know, the maps and which are proposing to do, but how much of it would be visible? Let's say from I-5 or from, you know, anywhere, you know, in Dunsmere. Is it pretty much up on the ridges or?
Well, the easement covers pretty much everything you can see from here.
Right.
Um, the fuel breaks, the, the ridge top fuel breaks, um, on the extreme outside would not be visible. They're up on top. You couldn't see them. Um, some of the, some of the purple, um, lines on the left side of your map there, um, those would end up being visible. Uh, where they go through the, the manzana fields right now, where there's timber there right now, they'd be much less visible, um, because we're still gonna leave forest cover. It's, it's called, what's it, it's what we call shaded fuel break. So, it'll still be trees. Um, if you know what you're looking for and looking at, you'd probably be able to say, yep, there's that fuel break. Um, but, uh, where there's timber, you're, you're not gonna be able to see a whole lot.
Good.
Um, but where there's brush, um, it, you know, we can't really leave brush.
I think, well, most people are concerned about, you know, where it's actually timber.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, there's this, oh, something.
Right, right. And, and so, as I said, within the view shed of Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, Castle Crags, the ski park, I-5, we're proposing, outside of the fuel breaks, to do continuous cover forestry, which means there would not be any clear cuts.
Now, what, there's something, I just want you to, um, I, I wanna make sure I heard you right. You're proposing doing prescribed burning?
Yes.
Up by the bracket area?
That's one area. What we have there are 100-year-old brushfields.
I understand, but I understand that it's also pretty steep terrain.
It is.
And it's hard to, um, we have a small fire.
Correct. And that's the exact reason we need to treat fuels in these areas.
I'm not against treating fuels.
Yeah.
Uh, how many agencies would that involve?
Most likely, two. Uh, there's two fire agencies in the area. Uh, I said, uh, Cal Fire would, they, they've pledged cooperation. Because this is Cal Fire money, they can't necessarily pledge crews, but we've already had one site. Like I said, they're, they're optimistically, um, looking at it. Um, you know, they're, to, to be able to mechanically treat those slopes because of the steepness is an impossibility. You can't put equipment on there. So, you're left with, uh, prescribed fires, the only way to really treat those fuels. So, you know, my perspective is, it's better to try to treat those fuels when we have low temperatures and high humidities, as opposed to a lightning strike or something else in, in, you know, the middle of summer, when we wouldn't be able to control those. So, so when we do control fire, it would be in very small increments. We, we, instead of, you know, the, the 300-acre brushfield up there, we block that up into 40, 50-acre units and do it a little bit at a time. We wouldn't play the match at the bottom and just let it go.
Well, I've had experience with projects where things just got really bad.
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely. We're very aware of that. Um, and, and, uh, there absolutely is risk involved. Um, but, you know, it's, do you try to mitigate that risk or take your chances in a lightning storm and, and hope for the best?
So, I think that this is really proposed for winter.
Well, no, there would be operations occurring...
Right, but most of these, I, I, I would just follow into with the prescribed.
Okay.
That would be a winter type project with the...
Certainly, when temperatures are low and humidities are up, um, you know, the problem in winter is you can't get fire to carry, period. Um, so, it, you know, you can't...
It's getting on the fire season.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can't burn during winter just 'cause it won't burn. So, you go on either end of that, in between fire season and winter. And, you know, that's, that's when you do it.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, the, the controlled burning, we put it in there. It's something we're willing to discuss. Um, you know, how do you get fire back on the landscape? It, it's gonna come eventually. It's just how do you deal with it? Um, we, it, it, that is absolutely not written in stone. It's just something...
No, I'm not against it.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I heard you correctly.
Right.
Because I believe that we haven't done enough prescribed burns. And that's the reason why we have such mega fires.
Right.
Because we have too much fuel load out there.
Right. Yeah. So, so we're trying to figure a way to how to, how to manage that fuel load in areas that we can't put equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Harv, did you have any questions?
Um, well, I see that there's, you're looking for a letter of support.
Correct.
Um, so, my question, this, this is not on the agenda for action. Uh, are you looking for, uh, a signature letter from, like, the mayor or from the city manager?
We would be willing to accept anything that's offered, in terms of support. We were, we were given this, um, literally about, well, the, the, this most recent phase, we were given about three or four weeks ago. It is due next Tuesday to Cal Fire. Uh, so, we realized there were some time constraints there, um, getting it agendized and, and whatnot. Um, so, it, you know, it, I don't believe you even have a forum here tonight. So, even if you could, uh, have a...
We do have a forum.
Oh, you do? Okay.
We can't meet unless we have a...
Oh, okay. I thought I heard that earlier. Um, so, individual letters from each council member or one from, you know, the, the council chair. We, we would just like to, to show Cal Fire, we engage with the community. Um, and if you do support it, we'd like to give a, re- relay to Cal Fire that we have that support.
I guess, uh, one question is, would it be appropriate that we move that back because we don't have a meeting scheduled for them?
Two separate votes. Suppose we were to say amongst us, if there's no objection, we just let the city manager...
I was going to suggest the same.
Do you have an objection to that?
The city manager will handle it with a time constraint. And if all of us support this, so that's, I feel, a whole two D's.
That's, that's absolutely wonderful.
I really can't take it for direction, but we just wanna make sure that we know it will happen. And I'm sure it'll happen, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and at any point in the future, if you have questions, I can give you my contact information.
Have it.
Yeah. Happy to come back and speak with you folks here or there.
As long as Chief Ciggy knows you, and Cal Fire, I'm happy with that.
Okay, great.
We may have questions from the audience.
Quickly, I, I was hoping that we can have the presentation you guys got, that I can get, that you guys got put online for, uh, citizens. But I think we're all supportive of the, of the project. Can you make sure that gets on our website?
It will be, we'll do that.
If we can make a PDF of that.
I, I, there may be PDF already on that flash drive that you can, otherwise, I'll email you something.
Harley?
Yeah, I have a question. You were talking about either a gift or land swap on the, um, trail, is that what you're supposed to roll?
Yes.
Is that gonna be a gift to Castle Crags? Or were you gonna swap with land from Castle Crags?
No, there'd be no swap.
Okay.
It'd be a donation.
That was a question.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. I should clarify, because the current staff is all the same old staff that, that we had in Roseburg. So, just give her name on the door.
Okay, next, we have committee reports. So, we're going through those.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
We'll come back. Recession. There we go.
Now, we are. We're good.
We're back in, um, session. Okay, uh, next, we have an item that, uh, we passed by and did not get to. We need approval via minutes, and I understand Shanti has correction.
Yes, I think there's, uh, two remaining.
What is it, gentlemen?
It was just a correctional vote.
Okay.
That's what corrected and had that.
Okay, so, you want to make, uh, you want to make a motion?
I didn't have to, I was the second one.
Dismissed?
Dismissed.
Well, that's right. You were the first. You were the...
I'd make a motion to be suspended as abandoned.
Can we do that with just two?
I mean, they want their minutes.
I second it. I'll second it. Okay. But he asked to abstain, so the two...
Why does he have to abstain?
He wasn't there.
It doesn't make any difference. He's accepting the minutes.
But we're accepting the minutes.
He doesn't have to abstain from accepting the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's best. Um, next, we have committee reports. Uh, I wanna start off by talking about economic development and tourism. Um, we've been talking a little bit about it for a while.
If I may, I apologize. I know there's a few people in the audience that are making a public comment.
Oh, okay. I'll, let's do that. A little bit of public comment. That's fine. Objection? No objection? No objections. So, we'll allow a public comment. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, members of the council. My name is David Gips. I'm a volunteer treasurer for Saving Chastecats, the California 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that was formed for the purpose of benefiting the community and the municipality. Um, I noticed, uh, on the TUT Measure P, ballot Measure P, it says, "To fund general operation of the City of Dunsmere to include supporting the library, parks and rec and other eligible projects or services." So, just that point of history. When this was first, uh, this tax was first proposed, it was proposed by the library committee to benefit the library. But that would require the two-thirds vote that could not be obtained. And so, that effort, uh, transmuted itself into, uh, a 51% vote requirement that could not be a special designated fund. So, there are no legal limitations on how this Measure P money is used. City has complete discretion in the sense it's no different than, uh, other general fund monies. However, there was a promise that was made in the process of seeking public support for this tax measure. And that one focuses just on two things. I'm speaking against my own interests here today. It was the two things, the community center building and the library. That's what the public was told back then. And I know because of my involvement, active involvement in that process. Um, I, I wanna turn now to the comments I was making earlier on behalf of Saving Chastecats Inc., um, to, to focus, to, to share with you how, uh, Nicole Torque, the president, views this as a, um, community enterprise and, and why we think it's important that the city engage at least in a nominal partnership of mutual shared responsibility regarding benefits to the community. What that means in plain English is, the amount of money sought, um, by Saving Chastecats is unimportant. Uh, we use that number because it rough, it represents about one month's of operational expenses. Um, so, bottom line is, we're asking for recognition of this community partnership concept with some kind of funding. And the amount of funding is not what's critical. Um, not recognizing that community sharing partnership, do you think? It, uh, would be, um, against the community interest, and here's why. What's, what Satan Chastecats does is, it helps people in the community that are disadvantaged, primarily disadvantaged, um, thereby benefiting the overall health of the community. Now, you, you think, well, what do, what do cats and dogs have to do with health of the community? Um, first of all, what it does is, it isn't just preventing unwanted feral cats. Um, it's more about, um, it's more about helping people in the community that benefit from having pets. There are a lot of people in this community that are mentally ill or, um, profoundly depressed, or drug addicted, or whatever, that engage in non-social activity that can't be mitigated in part when they have companion animals. So, having pets among people who really can't afford pets does have a direct benefit to the community. Um...
Could you guys wrap it up?
Yep. So, of the, um, when, when funds are provided to members of the community who can't afford vet care for their pets that are hit by a car or can't afford pet food, they then use that money to feed their kids. Um, it's part of, and similar to Community Resource Center, the Rotary Food Backpack Program for kids and so forth. So, these things are interlinked and interactive in community support. Um, now, what happens, and I'm almost done. What happens when, um, a cat, for example, is abandoned and someone calls and it's rescued? These animals aren't just neutered. They're taken, taken to a vet. They're given rabies shots, uh, treatment for fleas, treatment for parasites. They're screened for communicable diseases that can be spread to the community. Those that have these diseases are actually put down for the benefit and health of people's pets in town. Um, and so, the animal population is healthier. And, um, and then, uh, the last point is, the city has no animal control. Some of the activities that were performed by animal control have been picked up when volunteers have stepped up to, um, address issues of abandoned pets, dead cats, you know, and so forth. And so, um, in that sense, Saving Chastecats Inc. provides an extension to the community services, some of which were formerly provided by animal control officers, code enforcement people. Um, so, these are tangible benefits to the city. And because they are tangible benefits to the city and the people in the city, we think that Saving Chastecats is worthy of recognition with some kind of, uh, nominal, uh, grant support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Mr. Furlong?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I will try to be brief. Three items. One is, I applied for and was appointed to the rate study committee. Uh, as you go through your list of committee reports tonight, I don't see the rate study committee on that list. As far as I know, the committee met twice. Once to receive a report from base engineering that said, "Our rates for both solid waste disposal and sewage are gonna go up dramatically in the years ahead." So, is this committee going to meet? Do we have a mission? Do we have a timeline? Question mark. The second item is, the city under your leadership, Mr. Mayor, the city manager started a visioning process in February of this year. As far as I know, that's totally dropped off the radar. I spent a fair amount of time this morning looking at the proposed city budget. And it's mostly built on the plans and priorities of 2017 rather than 2018. I give the city manager great credit for starting to rebuild the city's budget process, but it emphasizes visioning. but it emphasizes vision, plan, and priorities, and I think you're missing that. The third point is, for all of you that have laptops, if you go to the city website and you click on the code enforcement tab, you'll see a picture of a gentleman, Ryan Leahy, the city's code enforcement officer, with an email address, with a phone number, and this nice verbiage that says that Mr. Leahy works with property owners and business owners for reasonable and timely compliance of code violations. I went into the city today and asked the woman at the counter, "Do we have a code enforcement officer?" And the answer is no. "Can we have one for a while?" "No." "Are we gonna get one?" "Well, we don't get to hear that kind of information, so I don't know." But if you're proposing a budget for 2018-19 that cuts the unfully funded code enforcement officer position, I ask you to share that with the public, the business owners, and the residents, so we know that we're gonna have no code enforcement in the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening, my name is Mark Rowley. I'm at 5734 as of yesterday, Dunsmere Avenue, which is gonna be the new Mossbury Hotel. So I can tell you that things are going well because officially... Mark Rowley, M-A-R-C-R-O-W-L-E-Y. And the reason that I know that things are going well is that we are officially behind schedule and over budget. So that's gonna be a pretty good sign that something must be happening or we are haplessly lost. But I am here to report that we're going very well. I'm gonna blow a little smoke at your direction. Our interactions with various staff members of the city, from our perspective, has gone very well. And so shortly, whatever that means, is different with the different family members of what we believe shortly is, but we will be bringing our operation online. With that, I want to conclude that I understand tourism exceptionally well, and we all know that tourism particularly is in a dramatic paradigm shift right now and probably more beneficial to our area here. Could be one of the reasons that we're here. We believe that individuals now are looking more for experiences, and boy, does this area have experiences. So our job is working with others, that we will focus on that and continue to micro-target folks and see where it all takes us. Shortly, we're also going to be going through the normal channels and the hiring steps. We didn't want to do that prematurely because as all projects go, they take longer than you can imagine. But we will probably be employing upwards to maybe four to six people. I don't know if all of them or any of them would be full-time, but they will be very good jobs. We tend to pay above the standard of the industry. And with that, we're getting ready to go, so thank you.
Before you sit down, I just want to, first of all, welcome you.
Thank you.
And second of all, would you explain to the folks here the type of hotel you'd be opening and why it would be different from other folks in town?
Okay, well, we're in a little bit different market, and it would appear that maybe you could envision that we don't know what we're doing, which is absolutely possible. But we have two similar operations, as I reported to the planning commission here several months ago. This is a big city to us. We're from a smaller town than this. We're over on Highway 299 in the little town of Willow Creek, and we have two operations there. One has been exactly five years and another one 10, and my wife and I were whitewater rafters for 35 years in this region. So it's, we not understand tourism, but we got a little long in the tooth for that. So we said, "Well, we're gonna do this, let's go for the upper end, what could possibly go wrong?" And we started on June 1st, 2008. If you recall that period of time, the world was coming to an end. We had just completed our project, much as this one. Both of those have been off-the-chart successful for us, and we will be going in at the level of a class four-plus hotel. Now, this first phase for us is very, very tiny. It's only seven rooms, but that's what we started with in Willow Creek, and we worked our way up to 20. We'll probably use a similar format. I'll make this brief. I can tell you, one of the primary reasons that we picked here is my son and daughter-in-law, who live here in Kyle, has been here for now, this is his 20th year since going to school. He says, "Grab a lawn chair, we're gonna go sit downtown, we're just gonna sit on the street for a while." So we spent a couple of hours there just watching the cars go by. And he goes, "There goes a Tesla, and there goes a Maserati, and there goes a high-end Mercedes." And we just saw this extraordinary amount of people that weren't particularly stopping in this region. So we said, "Well, that's similar to what we see, we're gonna go after that market." So today, the little bitty micro-businesses like us can be very competitive because social media just balances that all out. If you do a good job, and we rate at a 5.0 for the last four and a half years in our area, so that really helps us. We exceedingly work on the details and try to do a good job. But that market is already here, we're just gonna try to get them to spend the evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. When are you opening?
Oh, don't say that. I, tomorrow. I've said early July, nobody else in the family believes that. So I'm the early bird, but it's real close. You know, we're weeks away.
Thank you, sir.
Sunshine! Council, it's a mandate of this manager, city council, government to first take care of the basics. That is, our enterprise, water, sewer, waste, airport. After that, the safety and security of the city, the sheriffs and the fire department. Now, we're down to the roads, the maintenance of the buildings, advantage of the town, the organization of this democracy that we're enjoying tonight. That is what we do for $300,000 we collect in property taxes. That's a lot. Council, Dunsmere is a great little town. New and older residents imbue all sorts of character to its charm. And it's wonderful, that many come to love Dunsmere so much, they love it to death. They come to city council meetings with all sorts of great ideas, the shoulds, the have-tos, the needs. They don't seem to understand that as a councilman or the city manager's responsibilities to the basic necessities, the mandates of this government, which is to provide those services. I'm asking council, before placing items on the agenda for action, council must first understand any action will require research, will require a staff report, and following any action, more staff work. When council decides to put things on the agenda, it's spending money and it's spending resources. Right now, we don't have it. In a couple of years, we'll probably be more comfortable with doing a lot of these great things that people have in their mind, their visions. Slow down, be more deliberate, put it off a month or two. Right now, we have a huge investment in the Butterfly Bridge. We have been told it must be fixed. We have paid to have our city manager trade in the management and administration of grants. The time cycles on that bridge have come and gone, which you guys should be really aware of. We've asked for extensions, something that Dunsmere keeps doing. Now, townspeople come before you wanting differing agendas, and you guys submit. I get real frustrated. Stop. If this item is on your list of goals, if this item is so much more important than the sewer increase, or the solid waste increase, or the airport deficit, you need to put it out, give some time. Stop, stop tying the hands of staff, it's time for council to know what it needs to do and commit. Stop losing focus. We have no dog catcher, that's a health and safety, a basic need for a community, and you want to send out volunteers into the historic district for enforcement to check paint jobs? Say no. Say, "After we get our dog catcher back and the city can find a community services officer, which is like 22 hours, is that what we're doing?" Full-time, then we can start and train him to do historic district mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'll close before you, public comments. Shanta, any comments from you?
The bakery opened, and we are so happy. And I hope that everybody goes and starts visiting them as of tomorrow. They sold out basically on everything by the time I got there. And they have to be assessed, and they're going to be open for business, they're going to be open for the weekend, over the weekend. Their days off are going to be Monday and Tuesday. I talked to Mark and he's willing to, you know, right now, they're pretty new at this, and they're thinking of changing their hours too to accommodate the, you know, the fact that we have great weather once the sun goes down, and maybe staying open, you know, is a feasibility for them. But I am so happy that they're finally open, and the breads are great.
Thank you, ma'am.
And other than that, I'm sorry to say that it's supposed to rain on a Saturday.
So what's that happen?
I don't have any control over the weather. I keep trying, but I have no control over the weather.
Mr. Shirk Furlock?
First off, Mark, pleasure to meet you. I know Kyle, and I work with that man at Farwell as well. Excited to have you guys on here. A lot of great things.
Thank you.
Happy to have you here. Thanks for coming.
Okay, did you have anything before I wrap it up? Do you have anything you want to point out?
I just want to say that I talked with Sergeant Merrill this afternoon. He was hoping to be here, but he got double duty or he had to go to a graduation. So he apologized for not being able to make the meeting tonight. But he did say that he was going to contact Monsieur Richard and the railroad staff to make sure that everything for this weekend goes smooth as possible.
Okay. So, what I'd like to point out is that, yes, we do not have at this time community service officer, code enforcement officer. Part of that reason is, as we said, we're about $80,000 hit. We have things we would like to spend and buy, but when we have $80,000 or so roughly that we're gonna be in the red for the year, we're not in a position to be able to do that. But it is in the budget for the coming year. And we talked about that earlier, and it's gonna be a combination of a public works and a code enforcement officer, but we took a hit and we responded to it. With regards to the visioning and with regards to the rate study, I talked with the city manager on yesterday, on yesterday, and we talked about the fact that we need to get back to that. Primarily, we wanted to get back, we need to get back to the rate study. As for getting back to the visioning, that probably will have to wait till the next cycle, you were saying, is that right, in terms of trying to pick up and insert it into the budget process in the right way?
Yeah, what I'd like to preface that with is, I was planning on completing that effort, but we did lose our finance director and the high priority of the water bottling lease and what we were going through with trying to remedy that took precedence over moving forward. We did get the vision statement, it is in the budget, so I'm hoping that after this budget's done, one of the top goals would be to focus on the rate studies and also contract for solid waste and Butterfly Bridge. So there's a lot of really important things I was hoping to have identified for the next round of goals, and I still want to work on those with the council's direction to get them, so we can get them identified, number one, make, put them in resolution, and then look at next year's budget as well. So start working on this year, I want to make sure we're all clear on what our resources, our resources should be focused on now and also going into next year's budget.
Thank you. Yeah, that's good, so we'll just move on from there. Community reports, first of all, economic development and tourism. Two things that are going on there, one of them is something that is really exciting. Working with Richard Davis, Chamber Executive Director, we've been studying the land leased to the airport, and as part of the airport layout plan, which we did with grant money, we came up with a topographical map that we were able to use to identify how we might take that property up there and turn it into an industrial park, a light industrial park. And the things that are in our favor here are pretty enticing. One of the things is, is that if you look at the various properties for industrial uses that somebody might come into in the county, we're the only one that has two very good things. One is an airport, and the other is access to the interstate. So other places in the county may have access to an interstate, but they don't have access to an airport, or they got an airport, but the airport's too far away. In our case, we're looking at a market that is responding to the fact that in the south, all of the property, industrial property seems to be being bought up for the cannabis industry. And that's actually freezing people out of the market such that they're looking for other places where they could put in a distribution center, or where they could put in an operation of some sort. So we're anticipating that we would be able to, within a year or two, two years or three, be able to have in place folks that would be leasing our property, creating revenue, and we'll be working that process through. And we'll start off with working with the planning commission to do the zoning and starting to put together how it would look. And we're talking about possibly two or three tilt-ups that would be put into place that could support distribution centers, operations, whatever. And that would turn that property up there, which is about 79 acres, into a revenue-producing operation for the city. The second thing we're looking at is, we're hearing that the Mossbury Trail is just getting close, and they're talking possibly September. The one thing we need to look at from the city standpoint, that we need to move it further along, is how we're gonna deal with parking. And so, I know that I talked with David Kline last night, and he was saying that if we, he gets in touch with Tom Heselins, they might be able to work out some sort of idea of how we're gonna deal, for instance, with the signage in that area that right now the Rotary wants to work on. But there's a whole idea that if all of a sudden we say to the world in September that Mossbury Falls is now open, here's where you're gonna get to it, and it's at the Hedge Creek Falls, top of the trail, that's gonna be a challenge for us, so I think we need to look at that down the line. But those are the two things that are going on in economic development and tourism. Next, finance.
We, our last finance meeting was really going through the budget, which we had a budget workshop earlier, so there's really nothing to report because everything was covered on the budget. I just want to publicly proclaim that this is the nicest budget I have seen in 40 years for a city this small. So I want to, actually, because of Blake and Mark, it is readable, it's easy to understand. If you can, if you basically can follow your bank statement, you should be able to follow this budget. There's a few places where, you know, headings are missing, you know, the final budget, when it's presented, will have it, but it's easy to read, it's easy to find, you know, it's been really easy to work with Blake. So I just want to publicly, you know, I really am, by the fact that you guys produced such a beautiful report.
Well, thank you, that's great praise, Shanta. Next, we have public facilities and services, no meeting on that, is that right?
Mark, you have a moment.
Okay. Airport, Mark?
I would like to just say that last airport committee meeting that we had, there was a discussion ongoing about our airport layout plan and also some exciting news. It had to do with the, what you mentioned earlier in the budget workshop, with the state of California looking at having a billion-dollar budget that they're looking to...
that they're looking to have for airports in need with a zero match. So that's exciting news for us since we do have these projects in the queue and we are one of those airports that are eligible for those funds should they become available. So we're still waiting on the details of that and hopefully we're going to see that money come out so that it can support the improvements that these studies have paved the way for.
Okay, thank you. Next, emergency plant task force. Anything to report there, ma'am?
No, except the fact that I'm now going to be approved leaving the safety element. I know that our lead is going to a workshop because we have a renovation plan that we have to turn in to the Fuma. And then hopefully, once that's turned in, that I can meet with the people that hand off the money.
Good people to meet with, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, for the veterans memorial, we had a ceremony on Memorial Day and we'll make a point next year to do it earlier or better and plan a little bit, but we were able to pull it together. And we'll be looking at doing this earlier next year and also starting to talk about how we want to come up with a memorial for the names and the people that have given their lives. So we'll be looking into having a committee meeting with that. Don't have my fellow, well, I don't have Mr. Kaiser here, so I'll wait, but we'll come up with a meeting and we also have on the committee, Mr. Dindus.
Commander, we have something. Actually, we went to the service and I wanted you to know that it was during my service.
Thank you, ma'am.
And it's the only service I went through the whole time.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that very much. Mossbury, do you have anything new that we are into things?
Here, my, unfortunately, down the blue from all the mountains.
Yeah.
Backing up the academy.
Broadband, we just went through the whole broadband discussion there and beautification. We'll be talking about that.
Really? No, we haven't had a meeting since the last council meeting. There's nothing to discuss.
Well, they're on the agenda.
I know, but we haven't had meetings since.
I understand, gotcha. And so there's nobody here. Well, you want to talk about, we haven't had a meeting for the cannabis task force yet. Do you want to explain where we are?
Sure. The latest update, our city attorney, Mr. John Kenny, has been in the process of moving his office from one building to a new building. He has now settled into his new building and he came to Dunbar on Tuesday. Him and I sat here in this council room going over the matrix that the committee came up with to try to make sure that I could answer any questions they had so that he could draft the ordinance. Hoping to get something soon that we can schedule the next marijuana task or cannabis task force committee and present the draft ordinance for review and comment and move forward.
So when do you see the council seat network?
I thought it would have been before now, so it's... In my discussion with John Kenny, he seems clear on where things need to be in regards to the matrix there. It's just getting the ordinance from him in draft form. As soon as I get that, I will schedule the cannabis task force meeting and see where it goes.
And then we'll just be up to that letter for the next council meeting, and then we probably have thirty days for that to do that.
There's a whole public hearing process for the adoption.
So that's the path forward for that. Okay, onward, consent agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
On second half motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Group, next, the public hearing, old business beautification committee appointment. Mr. Brangman.
Okay, sorry, I just had to get to my space here. Okay. So this, at the last city council meeting, there was the, on the agenda under new business was to consider, for the council to consider, the appointing of Barbara Cross onto the beautification committee. She was not in attendance and there was a vote. There's two votes. Subsequent to those two votes, the issue was brought back to the city council meeting tonight. And since then, there was an application that came in from Mr. David Hicks. He did not know that there was an application already in and we didn't take into consideration that the application deadline had already closed. So we have one active, he did withdraw his application to realize there's already somebody that was, that had applied. So we have one active application for the citizen's seat that is vacant before you tonight for council consideration. Barbara Cross did say that she gave notice that she would not be able to make it to tonight's meeting as well. So it is up to the council for discussion and possible action.
Okay, any questions?
Yes. We're back to the same place we were in the last council meeting. It was defeated by a two-to-two vote and I think there was a lot of misunderstanding because if Mr. Kaiser is actually one of the ones that voted no and I did not vote, and that's where the minutes will change because I did not go on with, you know, bringing this back, you know, on the table. This cross is still not here. I don't vote for anybody that isn't sitting in the audience. She has known, you know, what the procedure is and I am standing by my vote from the, from the last council meeting.
Mr. Schurz, oh, first of all, let's do this. We're talking and discussing. Are there any comments from the public, public comment, open to public comment?
Still Peter R. is still the same location. I've known Barbara Cross ever since I moved the community ten years ago. She's been honored by the community numerous times for her dedication to the betterment of our community. I sat through the fairly dismissive discussion at your last city council meeting with the notion that two members of the city council have an axe in mind. That is Barbara Cross, who used to chair your planning commission, resigned. And she wrote a fairly clear letter to every one of you that was published in the newspaper. And her reason for resigning is because the city has no interest. And what she's interested in and what I'm interested in and what I think a lot of the members of the community are interested in, and that is the preservation of our town from the house of glass. How embarrassing is that? To the empty building across from the new Mossbury Hotel that has no paint on the front of it. It is as ugly as the Mossbury Hotel is beautiful. So Barbara Cross resigned out of frustration, but nonetheless is willing to come back to the beautification committee. But if the city's policy for the beautification committee is yours to do nothing, there's the city council that sets policy. There's the planning commission that according to Barbara's letter, met a grand total of three times last year. Really, the city puts no premium on future planning, Mr. Mayor. And then there's the beautification committee. I did attend the last meeting and the comments from council member Shanta are, this committee has no business with enforcement. Tim Holt and the volunteers that went around and got ninety percent voluntary compliance on the buildings that were tatty downtown and then had a small segment, less than ten percent, that needed formal follow-up. Well, no, the city's not going to do that. So maybe you'd be doing Barbara the privilege by telling her, no, you actually want to improve downtown in the buildings, so we're not picking you. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
If Mr. R.'s point is that it's hard for Barbara Cross to work in the government and achieve success, maybe it would be best that she wouldn't participate in the government and work from the private sector. I've read both letters to the editor and her resignation. And quite frankly, she both misunderstood her job in planning commission and the responsibility she had to council and to the city. I think she's a good woman. I think she cared. I imagine she loves the town to death. But there are realities here. We all live with them. You'd like broadband. There's a few things I like in the city, but we work together to get results.
Any other public comment? Opposed or in public comment? How would you term it, Mr. Schurz?
I'm always said, if we have people to execute a project and money to do it, then that's all I need to say yes or no. We have two people that have put in their, their letters of interest to assist with the community and this committee has proven that they can raise funds as they've done with the bench. And so I think if they want, I mean, I'm in favor of putting both of them because they're both setting up money to assist with it. That's my attitude.
Mr. Hicks is the president.
Oh, yes.
If you put his certification in later, we can already post.
Okay. That's serious to me. Thank you. With that said, Barbara stepping up. I know that we have the, the desire to have them be here so that face can be known. Obviously, she's not here, but that might be for political reasons. It might be for personal reasons, or maybe she just has something going on. But she's offering to step up to execute work.
We also have the beautification. And since Ms. Cross has resigned from the planning commission, she has shown up to no means whatsoever. You don't have to have a senior committee to come. As a matter of fact, there's a gentleman, Bob, that comes. He's taken care of Sempero Court. So that is an added reason, so.
Okay, from my standpoint, I share frustration that was felt and displayed last meeting by Mr. Kaiser or Shanta. And it was recently here at the podium suggested that it's some kind of payback. The point is, and it's been something we've been trying to make and we had the planning commission sit together with us and we had John Kenny come here and say, if you want to be aggressive about code enforcement, it's going to cost you a lot of money. And the reason that we don't pursue in the government, the thing that we would like to pursue is because we have a budget to beat.
Sir Mayor, if I may, this is about a beautification committee.
I know, and what I'm trying to say is, is that the reason that there's upset with Ms. Cross and the reason that I think we should wait until Mr. Kaiser is back so he also can ask his questions is because there's some kind of an attitude that the city council doesn't care. That's what I've heard explicitly, that I, we don't care. So why would we want to have somebody on a committee that believes that the city council does not care? Doesn't make any sense. We care as much as anybody on it. We have to live with the fact that if somebody were to go out on a review inspection and they made some complaint about somebody and started some processes, this is what Mr. Kenny had pointed out, we could end up being sued. The idea that we give power that we don't even as a city council have over to a group of people, it's the staff's job to do that, a code enforcement. And if we want to, as a city council, show that we support the downtown and support the beautification of our city, we cannot do it by simply saying, okay, we'll just create some committee and let them go out and do what they want, give them all the power and let them run up the bill. That's not responsible. So what we're doing is exploring how we do it within the right system. And that's where our city attorney and our city manager have been working on this. And what is your recommendation?
First, we're actually talking about the debate. Okay.
And I'm saying.
And it was defeated two-to-two in the last one week. I think there was a miscommunication why we are again reviewing this, but it was voted down two-to-two. So I would like for, I'm begging the point, you know, that the point is, are we going to, you know, the motion, I mean, the point in front of us is whether we are going to appoint Ms. Cross. If this, I don't want to, I don't want to discuss this again at another meeting, okay?
Well, then.
Twice she has been, you know, has not been present. She has not come to any, you know, any committee meetings. My standard, you know, I have not varied since I have sat on council. Somebody is not in the audience, they want to report, you know, say in our city, but they don't show up, you know, in the appointment of this thing. So I haven't changed my vote from the last.
Do I have a motion? No motion. So what do we do with that secret?
Discussion.
Done, discussion.
Discussion. Next, the general.
If we're not going to be able to talk about this, we should at least take a direction with it. We're not, we're not going to put her on, I'll make a motion to reject her, um, to reject her application.
Shanta?
Yes, I'm second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, beautification committee, inspection of downtown, which ties directly into this. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. This, this was brought up in the last city council meeting as well and was asked to bring it, agendize on the next agenda. I didn't hear any, anybody to argue otherwise. So here it is before you today. So the city council is being asked to consider the historical information regarding the historical district management commission, which has been to the city council a number of times, and a recent request from the beautification committee to conduct inspections of the downtown facility. And this goes, as you were saying, Mr. Mayor, back to some of the things that you were talking about prior item. In discussion with our legal counsel, Mr. John Kenny, any, any type of authority given to citizens or to any group needs to be well-defined, whether it's, and it needs to be within our laws. So we would have to establish certain codes and get them in place to provide those types of authorities. And that's not something we just give to a citizen type of group or group that is made up of citizens and committees. So the recommendation from the city council or legal counsel and from myself is that I would take no action on this item because you don't want to give a perceived, any kind of perception that there's authority that's being placed. And that being said, there's, as I mentioned before, anybody can inspect buildings from the, from the public right of way and file a complaint with the city and the city will follow its code enforcement actions. And even though we don't have a code enforcement officer, we are still following through and doing, sending out letters currently. We've been sending out letters because of long weed growing. We've been following issues with dogs.
House of Glass.
House of Glass, that's been ongoing.
Can you expand on that?
There was a new owner that purchased the house of glass just before Christmas holiday. They have investment ideas of what they want to do with that facility. But they, they also inherited a problem, a code enforcement problem that the current owner is aware of and he says that he's working towards resolving them. Security is the first issue. My last conversation with him was, we need to make sure that that place is secure so that kids can't fit in there. He did purchase the fencing that went around the facility and last time I talked to him, he said he was buying plywood to board up the windows to keep kids out there. I haven't followed up to see if that has been purchased or where he's at, if that's something we need to do.
It's not an historic district.
But here's, again, the inspections and reporting of downtown facilities can be done by anyone. We still receive these code enforcement or nuisance complaints and we still take action on that and we're hoping to get a code enforcement officer. And the city council can provide policy and direction to staff as they see fit. But that should be between the policy from council to the staff.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any public comment?
A little disappointed, Mr. Artclass. I was biting my tongue the last time. I thought it was inappropriate to cover one of my cover right now on that item. But there is a history involved with the people of Dunsmere and the downtown historic district, not knowing it, not being involved in that process. Council I here will be committing once again, opening a fault line between the townspeople, the historic district property owners, and some of us that would like to see change. For I greatly respect and want to see our historic district and want to see it developed and protected. I believe change must be projected from the participation of the property owners, that their participation must be encouraged and developed and not be mandated from enforcement and perceived harassment, perceived harassment. On the books, today is a law created by Mr. Art and then council and myself ten years ago. As Mr. Art said at the time, it's a carrot and stick approach. But we never created the carrots, the carrots that were supposed to be out there. Taxes, incentives, loans and grants never came out. I'm going to give you a really quick, basic scenario of a brief history. The historic district information and process was started by townspeople, local property owners and merchants. HDMC, Historic District Management Committee, it was designed as a proactive commission that was advisory to planning commission. HDMC was responsible for rebuilding the Bellmack Fountain, an incredible undertaking, and was instrumental in undergrounding the electrical on Dunsmere Avenue. That's the kind of proactive stuff they did. Town files for historic district and receives it, it passes historic district into ordinance. City disbands HDMC, it was political, I was there for it, places two members on planning commission to fulfill the responsibilities to the historic district ordinance, which is, I say, city manager is wrong. In order to fulfill that ordinance, or you have to take it and get rid of it. You need an organization to do that. Today, we talk about the removal of two planning commissioners, the idea of having seven to achieve historic district support and protection and handling by five requiring several ordinances to be reworked and passed by council. During this time, there have been several fires, several snowstorms and traffic accidents that have destroyed the beauty and history of our buildings. In each case, acting councils and their managers decided not to pursue the owner's responsibility to the historic district and instead allowed more economical solutions. The beautiful, and it was gorgeous, cornice on the Dunsmere Apartments, the marquee on the theater, countless barren lots in the commercial district from fires that have been left barren for years. In all this, we can see a pattern of wanting a historic district and severe resistance to the regulation expensing and preservation of buildings and facades. I submit to council, if they want to see the historic district preserved and protected, encourage the participation at all costs of property owners, they will need to be involved in the development of policy, encouragement of the surrounds, and the encouragement of the enforcement in an active way. Council should consider, instead of a beautification committee enforcement, redirecting that energy to resetting the HDMC and go through the same process Ron and the folks went through of going door to door to the city, city property owners, getting them on board and getting that reset. We have a lot of power with that organization. What's successful in getting things done is opportunity to get grants. My council said, my council with me and Art were on it, we sent out, we sent out many of the proposed group to enforce the code created. It was patently unsuccessful. Now, he sat here and said he got 90% response. That's not exactly what happened. And it's very disconcerting to have to listen to it. So I'm going to hit it as best I can, okay? What happened is, they were very successful in creating change, but successful and fermenting resent with the owners in public. Council was as well caged to pressure of public hearings when owners were forced and summoned to council and charged with furtherances of complying to the mandate. It was also a one-time process, and many subsequent councils have failed to take up any action or follow that process. Why is a good question? Because enforcement of the code takes a lot of city manager's time, city staff and city council's time. Taking people to court, the final resolution is expensive, and the judge refused to levy the fine claiming it too confusing to understand. This was yet to be cleared up. The problem with Art's law is that there was way too time-consuming, takes massive participation on staff, and results in fines we will not be able to impose and really dissuades property owners from participation in the historic district. Our friends, business owners and property owners in this town and historic district, like Mr. Art, should be encouraged and helped to make the best of their charge, our historic district first. Please go forward with this tonight. It was, please don't go forward with this tonight. It was a bad idea when I was on council and was seated and enacted as law. Please consider by starting down a historic district conversation about how we can encourage participation and support the owners in developing our downtown district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry I had to sit alone, I really do.
Any other comments?
No, maybe. Tom, all right, nice time, Mr. Avenue. I know when I was a kid and the beautification committee was around, and what it was, was a group of people that went around the businesses and said, "Hey, can we get some paint from you?" Or, "Can we get some roofing from you?" And then this committee of people got together, and they got the kids together, the kids in school, and they painted the person's building or they fixed the person's roof. But that's what I thought a committee of beautification was. I didn't think it was somebody that went out and gave people warnings and tickets and all that stuff.
And it isn't. That's not what it was designed for either.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Little, Mishanta, I understand, you have something to say?
Yes, I am on the beautification committee. And then this was brought up in the press council before, this committee was done so we elected it. And it was given a year, yeah, let's see if it works out. It was never, you know, envisioned to be some sort of enforcement, you know, capabilities. We have a small committee that has been putting in benches. We have a small, you know, group that's going in and taking care of hours. We have a gentleman, Bob, who sort of adopted the Centennial Park and trying to make it as pretty, you know, as it can. Barbara and I go around picking up trash. I have now engaged Ray Keller with the, from the high school, and that has passed his board, and he is, you know, we're thinking about having a volunteer day where people go out and, you know, go clean up the city because you don't have the money to spend, you know, with staff. So the committee is working, you know, here and there. What it was really envisioned to be is to beautify, you know, the whole city, not just one specific, you know, segment. I, when this whole, this is, it keeps coming up even in that committee, and it doesn't seem to want to die, this whole enforcement. And I have, you know, tried to dissuade Mr. Holt, who is the driving force of this, that it's not the proper place, you know, for this committee to be doing this. And that maybe it would be better to work with the chamber or any other entity to engage, you know, the people that are in, you know, this commercial district. It's not up to, you know, this, you know, committee to be going out there with clipboards, you know, and trying to enforce. And one of the, one of the things that really upsets me is that we, the Mr. Holt or Ms. Cross, which, you know, seems to be another driving force, were present when we had our attorney sit here and go through code enforcement. And the difficulty and, you know, the lawsuits that we open ourselves up for. So, you know, having this come up, you know, as an agenda item is really bewildering to me. I do not want to take any action, I don't believe in it. Certainly will vote down any effort for, you know, a part of the beautification committee to go around, you know, trying to enforce codes. And that's my thought. I'm a little vocal about it. Because it's really getting upsetting on the committee too.
Sir, well, first off, I just want to echo all the sentiments because the beautification committee, we found it too beautified Dunsmere. We called it the beautification committee for that reason, we didn't call it the code enforcement.
Right, and they keep trying to change the name too.
With that said, I want to totally go on the record and say, yes, we are lacking with code enforcement. Yes, there's a landslide of improvements we could be doing without it. But, seeing with the fire here, we still don't have people to execute it and markets to deal with it. So I'm not even good at the code enforcement thing. I just want to say that I want to take no action on this topic tonight, especially because council and Craig just looked to request that it should be on the agenda, and he's not here either, but I'd like, I don't know if you have anything to say, but I'm not going to make a motion.
Make a motion or not make a motion?
Make a motion.
To not do anything?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I would like the motion to also include to not have this, you know, keeping it brought up. I wanted to lay to rest.
How would we want to work this to make that happen, their desires?
Well, if it's, if there's a motion to just simply not move forward with the idea of what's being proposed and it passes, the only way to come back would be a majority vote to bring it back. I believe the only way to come back. So it would essentially stop that from happening from the truth, right?
Well, I guess the question I have is, one option is, is that we don't do anything and it just dies. The other option is we have a motion that says we will not do it. Is that what we're wanting, my hearing?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, if you want to put it into a motion?
Yeah, we can't bring it back. Look, I'm going to, that's a strong
I just like to make a motion to take no action.
Take no action?
Yeah.
And not be brought back, can I add to your motion?
I'll accept it.
Okay, then, I'm going to do the seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would like to make just a comment about that, is that we are taking measures to take the code enforcement around. We would love to have everyone in compliance, we would love to have every storefront filled, we'd love to have beautiful buildings. But again, the people to do it and the money to execute it. If we don't have one, then we can't do the other. Right now, we don't have the money, which means we don't have the people to do it. If we don't have the people to do it, we can't go out and issue citations, and we can't challenge in court because we still don't have the money to do it. So we're in between more than a rock and hard spot right now with code enforcement. And I think on the flip side of the conversation, this was, say, you know, our fire chief, we didn't have one, and it just so happened that he was calling. We could be in this one mode if it was the fire chief, but it just happened to be our code enforcement officer. And that's why we're having an issue. And we lose the funds associated with it as well. It's, I mean, I want the best for Dunsmere. Dunsmere has given me a lot. Dunsmere has offered me lots, and I want to give back to lots. But the reality is, is we don't have resources to do that yet, which will bridge that gap. And I want to look forward to that. That's all.
No, 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 I just want to, let me just say this. I just want to finish up this topic by pointing out that it is really sad to think that when a group of people put all they put into with this council because they care so much about the city, many for it, and to imagine that somebody thinks that we're not doing something because they don't care, it's that sad.
It's not a bad thing, it's not disappointing and sad, it's really a bad thing.
I'm being polite here. Let's just try and move forward this, if you can. Three minute?
Five, three minutes.
Okay, a three-minute break.
Stand up so they don't want to speak.
Run, great.
We're back in session and we're having a momentary public comment.
Yeah, okay, I'll say, I will keep this brief, but so Lon and I grew up in a little town much like this, and I had the distinction that we had a community services district there, and still do. And I was its district manager for 31 years. So when you try to do something in a non-incorporated town, the same questions you asked there, we understand all of this, we love that there's such passion in the community. It's probably part of the reason disagreements don't really matter, it's the passion that's behind it. But what I wanted to say is, I think that there's opportunity because this exact scenario was in our community, and we batted it around for half a decade, and we were in this hopeless catch-22 and we couldn't move on. So we just said, "We're going to go to whoever we can work with in our community. Hopefully, they're in our downtown area, we can't get beyond this, what can we do?" And we had owners step up and say, "I can do this and I can do this." And it worked, and it took a bit of a time, but once we got the ball rolling, we led by example, and we just said, "We're probably not going to get grants, the city can't help us." In our case, the district can't help us. But what can we do communicating and working together to take this vision and move it forward? And I know I'm being overly simplistic, but it worked for us because we were in the exact same position you're at right now.
Thank you.
So my advice is, keep the dialogue going, look who can help you, even if people have diametrically opposite opinions, what can we do to keep moving forward? And we've made it work, and we were a little super oppressed mill town, and we figured it out. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, award of contract sidewalk bus stop project.
Okay, let me get back to my place here. Okay, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, before you tonight is some good news here. At prior council meetings, there was, the council had voted to delegate or to allocate funds from SB1 for the current fiscal year and SB1 funds for the next fiscal year to go towards the sidewalk project. And we received money from the LTC's RSTP funds, an amount of $33,591 to go towards this sidewalk and bus shelter project. Since then, we went out to bid, competitive bidding. We received only two bids, and both bids were higher than what we had in the budget. But we have, the lowest bid is a responsible bid, and our engineers worked with the bid provider and has worked to re-scope the bid to bring it within our budget. So we have as an attachment, a overview of the project, and you can see the area that was taken out was the, there's a section that's going to be just south of where the bus shelter is going to go, so the, just from the city hall wall out to the area where the bus shelter is going to actually be, is we were going to do curb veteran sidewalk in that section. Now, then there's kind of a driveway approach right there. We're going to leave that as it is, it's not that bad. And there's also a crosswalk And there's also a crosswalk ramp that's on the south side of the city hall that was kind of away from the sidewalk project that I was looking to do because it's going to connect with the bus stop semi-seat on the other side by the US Bank. That is being proposed to be taken out as well. But with the removal of those, we keep everything else in the project. Where we're looking at getting the larger bus shelter, kind of like what's out there by Children's Park in the parking lot over here, just north of city hall. And getting a semi-seat over at the, in front of US Bank that's going to be there, curb gutter sidewalk there as well. And also, we're looking at an eight, a crosswalk over there next to Mexican Ross Restaurant would be done as well. So we're able to keep this project moving forward should the council award this bid so that we can notice the engineers to notice the contractor that they have received the award of this bid. So it's not as much of a project as we were hoping for. Everything is much more expensive than we, our engineer estimate came in and what I expected as well. But we're able to keep the project moving forward with this alteration.
Are you happy with the contract?
I thought we would get more for our money.
I'm not real happy.
No, I'm not. I, but it's what we were able to get. I think part of the problem is we did the bid at the time, the best time to bid these projects is in the wintertime when contractors are lining up their season for the coming construction season. So we were a little bit behind eight ball on that. The other part is we're remote. It's a small project. They still have to mobilize their crews all the way to Dunsmere. And there's a cost to that. So that's one of the things I'm not used to.
Where is this, they are in, paid construction coming from?
I'm not sure.
What are you looking for, sir?
No, I was just wondering where they're coming from because the current cost of all the, this small project, you know.
Yeah, I know.
You just mentioned it and I'm just asking you as to where are they actually located?
I don't have any information. The other bid which was...
Not in Dunsmere and not in Manchester.
The other bid was from writing and it was over $100,000.
So tell me, what would happen if we held off? Do you think we'd get a better bid?
No. If we held off, we'd have to bid again. Most likely, we won't get the two that already bid. And we'd be rolling dice to see if we get anybody else to bid.
You're not happy, but you're willing to accept it?
I think it's, I think it's going to be an exciting project to have something actually happen here in the downtown area with...
Yeah, is this in the budget, the amount that is specified?
Yep.
What is the total amount that is going to be? Too many, too many amounts here floating around on the staff report.
So the total amount is $67,590.25.
And we have that in the budget?
Yes. Well, it wants the budget to be...
Well, I know, but it's budgeted.
It's in the budget.
Are you happy with this, Blake?
I'm a bit marked.
Hey, that's not an answer.
I think it's my answer.
Yes, no, uh... I don't want to be an engineer, but I, you know, you're the financial, you know, manager and you're the city manager that has to implement this and if we can't do better...
I don't believe we can do better.
Okay, then I'll accept your recommendation.
Mr. Spurlock, any questions before we get to actual discussion?
No.
Any discussion of comments from the public?
I just think it's a good deal.
Okay, that sounds like a public comment. I'll close the podium with a public comment. Any discussion then that you would like to discuss? You want to move? You looking for a motion? I'm looking for a motion.
So you have a new video today.
And I know that you keep doing this really well. This one is, I think we're probably all in concurrence, we can't do better. I am willing to take the city manager's...
It's on page two?
I've got it.
Okay.
I'm going to move, I move to award to 2018 sidewalk project Garrett Taylor Construction, Inc. and authorize the city manager to sign all contract documents associated with the project to include an engineering agreement for construction engineering with PACE Engineering.
I second that.
Let's move and second it. All in favor, say aye. Oh, hold on. Yeah, we have to do it all at the same time.
Yes.
Aye.
And you?
Aye. Okay, on to the next item then. Planning Commission seats, the question of whether we want to move from seven to five. And before even the city manager says anything, I want to point out that this was merely a question that we wanted to formally ask the planning commission. It's not a move on our part to try and affirmatively reduce the amount of members. It's more of a question. So anything else you'd like to add to that? Or am I wrong in that?
Yes, my understanding was it was to be brought back to the city council for discussion and possible action.
Okay, so I have the planning commissioner, the chair of the planning commission, Duncan Conaway.
Duncan Conway. I just would like to say I think that going from seven to five would be a huge disservice to the citizens of the city. I think more people to have represent the people is always better. And be limited and really run the chance of not covering some of the citizens and their beliefs and their thoughts on what they would like.
Any questions in this comment?
No, I like the letter that you sent to our city manager and I have to confirm.
Any public comments?
There's another planning commissioner. I concur with what she said.
Okay.
Computer now.
Hey, I didn't have time. I had to take work off to write the other two and they're all messed up. Counsel, I really regret being in front of you yet again. Let me start by repeating an old refrain in this, don't interrupt, counsel. Let me, by repeating an old refrain, my little joke line here. Hey, Mount Shasta has seven. Okay, that being said, cities in our county utilize seven-member planning commissions. Reason being the planning commission that refers findings to council making aesthetic and policy decisions which is more based on the town's sentiment as a group and not just the more reasoned decisions made by a council facing the city. Being able to spread out the decisions shared by many, that, by so many that a few allows more views, more considerations and decisions made from planning and then referred to council should represent the lion's share of the sentiment of the town. Planning commission is also the seating ground and training for future councilmen. And a process where the public becomes aware of individuals' decision-making and their facilitating process in government. I understand that some council feel over, feel the turnover of a seven-member board is an effort to keep it fully seated. I have been disappointed in this. First of all, council has a responsibility to involve the community in the democratic process. This includes having people to take on seats and future councils. This is best done to set committee and commission appointments actively involving the citizens in the ways of government and the government's issues. Secondly, now that council has stabilized our manager position, it seems to be resting on a laurels. With the potential of two councillors leaving, I would hope their efforts in engaging the public and sharing their experiences in government would be high on their personal agendas in regards to seeing the legacy and the incredible contribution they have made carried forth.
Thank you, Mr. Rubio.
Yes, thank you. Now...
I was really, I have one thing, I think you should stop where...
I think I should have not come tonight. Now, we have heard that the submission process to local paper, OIAQ, what application? I took one hour, called and informed Mrs. Carol Salco, one who was in the past, wanted to participate in government process. It took very little time. She signed and submitted. So it's not hard to get people involved in the government seat. It just takes some effort. And as, I'm not sure council process and solicitation in the local newspapers are all that effective. I suggest that we keep a running tally of names in the council chamber, of people who might want to pursue an appointment and reduce the size of the cost of the added newspaper and pursue multiple listings in social networks. And finally, charge our city manager with lighting a fire under council's butts to get people involved in our government. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Rubio. Any other public comments, Harley?
Nope.
Close the podium with a public comment. We got a problem. Oh, we do have one. Here we do, a public director.
You know, Richard Dentress with Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce. But when I was working with engineers and being an engineer and project manager, one of the things that we had to do was go before planning commissions. And the one way that you get a lot of feedback is from the planning commission when there's more people on it. The larger the planning commission, the better feedback you're going to get and the better we can make a big presentation to a city council when it comes to this. So we can answer all those questions that they have because I think a five-member board that I had to go make presentations before a lot of times didn't have all the questions that we needed to answer. So more people, I think in this particular case, the better. It's better for us to make decisions as engineers and planning people. And so just to say that I think that you should keep your seven members on board.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll close the podium with a public comment.
I have a problem with keeping a seven-member charter, I think, into the service, which is a small city. To kind of quantify, I don't find that the reason that we have a hard time filling the seats is in my eyes. Yeah, we have had an application in for the seat that was, you know, that somebody designed and it was just rather recently that it was another reservation. So I don't, I think that that is not a correct assessment. So I have no desire to change it from, you know, I like to read it at the number that it is. I wouldn't even mind it, you know, going up tonight.
Mr. Spurlock?
I don't know if we have a table for nine people. But that's okay. Maybe we'll do that, I don't know. I like making really short and easy points, you know, the one short and easy point. While you can take a pointer from this if you want. It's, I agree with Donna Kenna.
Okay, so what are our options here? Just do anything? Or move not to, change or...
Well, yeah, and this was brought up at the last city council meeting to be placed on the agenda. I did ask if I had to do a staff report because I had a lot of things going on. I was told, no, you don't need to do a staff report. Just get it on agenda so we can discuss and possibly provide direction. So what I did note at the last one, I'll note again, that any action that would look to change the seat from seven to five would require legal to be involved to rewrite our ordinances and to place into our code, to get it codified, to make those changes, that is lengthy. It's going to be, it'll take my time and the city's turn of time and also have a cost associated with that.
Well, I sense that from the three of us, none of us want to, we just want to properly close it down.
So...
No, we just want to now have to not bring this back up on the agenda.
Yeah, I would say you can take no action or you could, somebody can motion to...
Remain?
To, yeah, have the seats remain as current or make motion to make this, to change the point.
I want to make a motion, but I also want to make sure that we're moving on as well because we do have candidates that we...
Well, there will have to be a building.
So that's what I want to make sure is that, I mean, if it's already been done, maybe I'll need to worry about it. Make a motion basically to have them at the next meeting so we can exchange words. That's correct.
Yes.
And make no change to...
Other than that, no direction? Let's see what's...
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to take no action and leave the seats as they are. And then on the next meeting, please, I want to check that.
Stop right there.
Stop right there. Don't ask the two of you.
Okay.
I second that we leave the planning commission, get seven seats and take no action to reduce it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The same thing, right? No action?
I don't know if she wrote down, but I'm the same.
I would take no action, keep seven seats as they are.
Same thing.
I just want to make that.
Do you agree with any of you? Okay, we're all seven.
Sorry, I didn't hear the votes, please.
It's all three, yes. To not take any action. Okay, the last item is not on the agenda now. We took that off. So that leaves us with closing. Any things we want to talk about for the next meeting?
No, I think we need to put on the agenda to put on the two seats on the panel.
Yeah, that's, it would have been on today's agenda if it had not been on.
So we'll see the next one.
I have some things to put on the agenda, but I'd like to see some meetings thrown this week. And I really don't have enough time.
Yeah, I'm...
You guys, you need to concentrate on the whole butterfly bridge job.
Need to get the budget fine.
Get the budget finalized.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No, I would like to have on the agenda...
I think I may be absent for the next meeting. Just want to give a heads up. I have to take a class in Sacramento. Which would be that, no, I think I should, is the next meeting on the 23rd? Just forgot, I'll be there.
Anything else? Wait, your motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You want to second this?
I want to make a motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yay! Thank you.
May I just...